Ms. Carter?
Here.
Ms. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Rikis?
Here.
Ms. Garrison?
Here.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Here. We'll have the approval of the agenda.
Do I have the motions? Do I have all of them? Oh, I know. I know. I move the board to approve tonight's meeting agenda with an amended, with an amendment to present item 13, Board Member Oath, after number nine, election results.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. We'll have our proposed action items. Ms. Bailey?
I move the Board of Education to accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments in the April 2015 Board of Education meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes. The motion passes seven to zero.
And now, turn it over.
And I have just a few announcements. Thank you. Let me start with a great word of appreciation. This week, District 65 celebrates Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. And on behalf of the administration and the board, I want to take the opportunity to publicly thank all of our faculty and staff for everything they do to support the students and families of our, of our school district. Throughout the week, there are many special recognitions taking place in each of our schools to celebrate terrific teachers, administrators, and educational support staff. And as a small token of appreciation, all of our staff members will receive a special ice cream treat from the local Cold Stone Creamery here in Evanston, and we thank them for their generous donation. Once again, on behalf of all of us, a special thanks to all of our staff for their willingness and dedication to serve every child, every day, whatever it takes. I also, if I may?
Yes.
I also have an opportunity to, and this is a wonderful opportunity and privilege to introduce a newly appointed principal to District 65. It's my pleasure to introduce Lauren Norwood, who will be taking over in July as a principal at Bessie Rhodes, the Global Studies School. Lauren comes to us as a teacher, a coach, a reading specialist, a third grade teacher, a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade specialist, a parent coordinator, somebody who's worked on the evaluation of teachers through the development of the Charlotte Danielson framework, and deeply involved and engaged in the, in public schools and in public schooling. She has a bachelor's degree in education from National Lewis, a master's degree from Governor State University in education administration, and another master's degree in reading from Concordia University. And she has a spirit and a desire to do well and do good for all of us and with all of us. So it's my great pleasure to introduce Lauren Norwood, who is here tonight and will say a few words. But join me in welcoming Lauren. Lauren.
Good evening, Evanston-Skokie School District 65. I am Lauren Norwood, beautifully introduced by Dr. Goran. I am so excited to be a part of this community and school district, and I'm looking forward to partnering with every one of you in moving kids to their next level. Had the wonderful opportunity of meeting George, Louis, and Elliot this morning, who are Bessie Rhodes students. So happy to meet them, as well as their mom, who is working diligently to move our school district in its right direction, along with their dad. So it's been a wonderful experience to be here, to have the opportunity to meet you. I'm very much looking forward to the work that's ahead. I know that there's lots to be done, but that has to be done in partnership. So I'm looking forward to the partnership with parents, community, board members, and I'm ready for the challenges ahead. So thank you again, and it's wonderful coming out this evening to meet all of you.
Thank you.
You so much. And that's my report.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to a tribute to our retiring board member, Katie Bailey. May we welcome anyone from the public who would like to come up and speak?
She's moving off to Florida.
What?
She's moving off to Florida. I'm retiring.
She's moving off to Florida. Boca Raton.
So when I heard this opportunity was coming, I just couldn't pass it up. But you'll have to excuse, I felt like if I didn't write down what I was saying, that I just could go on a little too long. I just have to say, I'm thrilled to be here today to share my gratitude with Katie Bailey. Katie is an extraordinary leader, and I feel lucky to be able to work with her and learn from her passion for equity and the well-being of all of Evanston's young people. In thinking of all of your contributions, Katie, I have to highlight that you've been such an extraordinary champion, a real champion, for the district partnerships, the community partnerships of District 65. YOU specifically, we've been fortunate in many ways to have your guidance, not the least of which is your presence on our community council, just the way that you've been able to bring new ideas and real expertise to YOU's future and some of the stumbers that we face in our programs has been just incredible. But additionally, I personally have had the pleasure of working with you as you liaised with the school, as the school board member of Leadership Council for Evanston Community Schools Initiative. From the very first day of building this initiative, of this, building this very budding, brand-new initiative, Katie was really a vocal advocate for community schools. And from our very early days of dreaming up possibilities, all the way to the nitty-gritty of detailed planning, Katie has really been the voice challenging us to keep equity at the forefront of the initiative and to really be bold in imagining new ways of doing things, which I especially love. Katie, I'm so thankful for your enthusiasm, for your fierce commitment to a better future, and your consistent willingness to step up and into what we're doing. Your board presence will be missed, but Evanston will no doubt continue to feel the grace and the effect of your leadership in so many ways. I feel like I could go on for a really long time, but I'll just leave it to say, it has been a real pleasure.
Thank you, Missy.
Thanks. Everything I've learned in community schools came to you, so thank you, Missy. Those were your chances.
Two hundred and fifty?
Two fifty.
Two fifty. Do you like to introduce yourselves?
Katie, on behalf of all of the community, we want to thank you for your commitment to the children of Evanston. Between the three of us, there are seven of them, who have gone through District 65 schools under your commitment to our school board. We're grateful and proud, and we're especially glad to have you back. Thank you so much for your tireless commitment to our children and all the children of Evanston. You've been an amazing leader, and we're very proud of you.
We try, and she's pushing away. Do you have enough tissue? I do. The brain trust behind the first campaign. Although, well, I'm sitting here, too. Thanks, guys. I'm okay now.
Next?
Must be someone else that, when have you headed up?
Job.
Okay.
Job.
Katie, I'm gonna miss you. Principals will miss you. You are a gem in this community. You've done some much work, your leadership, all that you've given of yourself to this community, and it's made a huge difference. You will be missed, I'm gonna tell you that. You're just a, just a wonderful person. Your heart's in the right place, caring, kind, considerate, and I definitely will appreciate you and all that you've done, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm still gonna come to King Arts, watch the MLK celebrations. Keep inviting me, I love it there.
Katie, if I may, let me also echo the words of everyone here. And when I think of you, I think of the level of activity and passion that you bring to the work at this table, but not only at this table, for, in our schools and around our community. We can go down the list of the multiple committees that you've been on and the leadership role you've played on this board, the leadership role you play in the community. What we all see as members of the community and then as members of the broader staff of District 65 is your deep passion for making things better for all children in Evanston and Skokie. And for that, it's to your credit that the service that you've given for eight hard years is reflected in everything that we do every day for every child, and I wanna thank you. I also want to personally thank you for the support and assistance as I've assumed this role. You have a perspective that is historical, you know, you know how things operate and have operated and can operate, and so for that, it's a really helpful. And the activism that you bring to the work, again, at this table, is so important for a character like me and my role, because it's a, it's a way to have the point, counterpoint of how we learn from each other to actually serve our community. So let me thank you for your belief in children. Let me thank you for your belief in Evanston and Skokie, and let me totally thank you for your belief in the great purpose of public schools. It's a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna try to go to the board.
Suni?
I will. Go first. Keep it brief. I'm not very good at these public goodbye sorts of things, so I apologize in advance for my inequence. Katie and I met several years ago when I was out working on the last referendum committee, and we talked, we became friends. And so when I was considering running for school board, I called Katie up and convinced her to come on a walk with me. And I remember, I asked you, you know, why did you do it? Why did you run for board? And your answer was, I believe strongly in community service. I wanna model that for my kids, and this is a way that I could, you know, bring my skills and my passion into community service. And I remember that wasn't really the answer, the type of answer that I was expecting. I mean, frankly, I was wondering, like, what issue brought you to the table, something like that. But that stuck with me, because I thought, you know, that is the absolute, I mean, it's in some ways, it's very obvious, right? That's what brings us all to the table, but in another way, it did, it just stuck with me that that's really what the focus has to be. And I think that, as we've, I've served on you in sport and before that, that was always very clear, that that was your focus, was the community, was the children, all the children. And, you know, as we've gotten, sometimes get into some nitty-gritty and get bogged down in some minutia, you're always the one who kind of brings us back to remember, whether it's a historical perspective of what's been going on in the district or just, you know, remembering all the kids and looking at it more, like, from a more global perspective, you've always sort of brought us back to that. So, you know, echoing what everyone says, it's, you've always made it about the children. You clearly have a deep commitment and belief in our schools and in our community, and that shows in how you've served over the last eight years. I really enjoyed working with you. I'm gonna miss the perspective that you bring, the humor, maybe not quite so much the snorting laughter, but you never know, in a couple of weeks, I might be planning for it, so. I believe that now, your commitment to community service is really, did you do that on purpose?
I tried not to.
I believe your commitment to community service is as strong now as it was eight years ago when you ran. So I look at this as, you're going off the board, that I kind of, I fully expect that at some point, maybe after you've gone back and reacquainted yourself with your family and friends, you're allowed to do that, that, you know, we'll probably be sitting around a table again sometime and working on how we're gonna better the community. So until then, cheers.
Until I pull my breath apart.
Oh, I'll jump in. So Katie, I think I first met you when I was the DEP rep on the finance committee, and you were the new finance chair. And I think one of the most amazing and wonderful things was watching you go from being unsure, as anybody would be, and that's a daunting role, to, you became assured month after month, more assurance, more assurance, more assurance, and I feel very privileged to have been in a board meeting by which time you're president, and you sort of fully embraced and assumed that mantle of leader. And it was a beautiful thing to watch, and I have just learned so much from you, and I think what I, I love the most is, is where your heart is. Your instincts are solid, and I think, you know, you just sort of are imbued with the values that we want in a board member of caring about public education, caring about kids, caring about dealing with the public in a straightforward manner. It's just been amazing, and gosh, I'm gonna miss you.
A call.
I will.
I know, I'm gonna be texting you all, so.
Thank you, from the bottom of my heart.
You say you're proud of me, you know, it's kind of problematic.
First, I should start off by saying I am proud of you. But as the newest board member for a couple more minutes, I would say, so, the first time I met Katie, it's funny, before I met Katie, before I was on the board, everyone asked me, did I know Katie Bailey? People, like, at least ten different people who didn't even run in the same circles all asked me, did I know Katie Bailey? I need to meet Katie Bailey. You have to talk to Katie Bailey. So I actually met Katie Bailey and found her to be a pretty awesome person, very caring. And then after I got on the board, she was still awesome, but she was, I consider her the board historian, and she, not that she's the oldest person on the board, but she seems to remember everything that's happened on the board, even before she was on the board, it seems. I mean, she goes back, I don't know, ten, fifteen years. She talks about either programs, ideas, or things that the board has tried to do. So I do appreciate it. You've always been very kind and warm to me, so thank you very much, and I am proud of you.
Thank you, Omar.
I'll go next. Okay. So.
Where's the slideshow?
I did not do the slideshow, because it was focused on one or two photos, but I did, I did write down what I was gonna say, because I wanted to make sure I said it correctly. So, so pardon me for looking at this. So, I've been thinking on and off for, like, two to three weeks, it keeps coming to me, so what are you gonna say when Katie, what are you gonna say about Katie? Because it's so difficult to think how you condense all the service you've provided this school district into a couple short, pithy comments. But, and as I was thinking about it, it might seem odd, but my mind kept going to a certain passage from scripture. And I rejected that at first, given the whole church-state thing, and thinking maybe it was inappropriate, but it kept returning to me, and so I felt it was, there was a reason it was returning to me, and then I know that your faith guides all of your actions, and so I thought it was appropriate to share. So, from the Book of Micah in the Old Testament, the Lord says, "What does the Lord require of you? To act justly, and to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God." There are two parts of this passage that I really think Katie exhibits traits that I see in you and that I love about you. To act justly, you know, we're not a court of law here, but I've seen so many instances that you're looking for the just and the right path for our students and for our school board. You do this in the way you represent the needs of students, the needs of families with the greatest need and the greatest potential. You do this in, when you're advocating to ensure all voices are heard as we make decisions, and you do this by recognizing that acting justly in education means uncovering inequities and addressing them head-on. That's what it means here, and I truly admire this in your work and service. And then to walk humbly. You have acquired so much, as everybody said here, in breadth of knowledge and depth of knowledge about schools, about education, and about learning through your service, yet I hear you time and again remind this board that we are not the experts here. It's, it's very easy to lose sight of that. We hire and we support our administrators, our staff, our faculty, and we rely on all of you for that expertise and, and to help us inform those decisions. And to me, that is the essence of being humble. You've helped me, and I will continue to hear that voice of, we are not always the experts on education, but we are here partnering with our educators and administrators in everything we do. So Katie, for these and many other reasons, I want to thank you for your service, for your leadership, and for truly setting the bar on what it means to be a school board member in Evanston, in Skokie. Thank you.
So, I need to say something, though, because I wonder, I'm gonna, y'all know I'm gonna say something in a few minutes, so we'll have a long period here for me, but I, I didn't know how to use that passage of, and I just think you need to know that I used that passage, and it really has loved my service. I think we are all called to do just, to walk humbly, love kindness, so thank you for doing it.
I guess it's my turn.
Yeah, I'm looking out, like, okay.
The, the first thing is, aren't you glad, Katie, that Omar and I didn't choose to not run so that we could just focus on you tonight?
You know it has crossed.
Otherwise, we'd have to divide all the time off.
You know it has crossed my mind, both the good and the bad. Thank you.
And I, like Candace, also wrote some notes down, because I, I wanted to make sure to capture some things, but, you know, the first thing is, I don't know how much people realize it takes in terms of time and effort to really be a thoughtful, committed, informed board member, and that you've done that for eight years, and that you did it, as we've heard, you know, in leadership roles, and, you know, seeing you be board president and knowing what you were doing not only publicly, but all the conversations you were having to, to try and reconcile differences and bridge gaps, and that took a really remarkable commitment. And so I think, I just want people to know that, you know, that it's way above the role of any other board member, I think, in a lot of ways, to really play that leadership role. And we've certainly had our disagreements over the years, which should be expected, right? But what strikes me is that even with those disagreements, that we, you know, walk away with respect and care for each other about, you know, our school board work, but also our lives. So I, I wanted you to know that. And something also really has stuck with me, and I remember from the election four years ago, when Katie Bailey was endorsed by the Evanston Review for reelection, and they used this term, and they said, "Katie Bailey is the workhorse of the school board."
It's my first line!
And I, it's so true, I mean, you've been, and that was before you were board president, right? You were doing so much even at that point on different committees, in reaching out to the community and really engaging, and, you know, I thought they really nailed it with that term. But I did want to just highlight a few things that I'm really going to miss about you serving on the board. And the first is very different from Suni, because I am leading with that I will miss your snorty laughs, because I do think those make us chuckle. And we really will miss, I will miss, your institutional knowledge. As Omar said, you really are a historian. Fortunately, we have Tracy to continue to tap into with her six years of board service, but you really brought a depth of knowledge of people and programs and nuances that we just really need to pay attention to. I will miss ribbing you about drinking Diet Coke.
Which I've given up.
You have given it up, right? Because as I called it, poison in a can. I'm really glad to hear you gave it up. That actually really makes my night.
I was gonna say it, so I'm glad you did. I was gonna say it, but.
All right.
Gave it up for today.
And that you, you have this ability to be razor-focused and sharp on an issue and the next moment just be really goofy and silly. And so it makes it enjoyable to serve with you, both, you know, on a substantive level, but also just trying to keep it fun, because there are a lot of serious moments that aren't necessarily always fun. So that's really it, just all of those great things. I really hope that you enjoy all of your newfound free time, and thank you. Thank you for serving together.
Okay, now that Richard stole my first line, I don't know where to begin. But I was reflecting on how to summarize eight years of board service, and I do kind of wanna go through some of the things you've done, because when you were endorsed, they did use that not very wonderful term, workhorse, but it really did capture the fact that the very first year you were on the board, you started out as the policy chair, you then went on to finance chair, then you went on to be on the school, city school liaison, the joint committee, the, let me see if I have my list here, you were on the green committee, which you won an award for, and then you went on to board presidency. And the thing, the thing that was so notable about your role as the board president is you really changed the culture of the board since I've been on the board, and that's not to say that, you know, it was lacking in any way, but you really came on the board, and when your first year, the achievement report had the ISATs without even breaking out meets and exceeds, all we saw were kids who were passing the bar of meets, exceed, on the ISATs. We took the explore test, no one even saw the results of this explore test. Katie came in and she started ferociously asking questions about data, about numbers, and at first, there was a little resistance, I remember, but she really, the administration came to expect these questions, and the board began, began to appreciate the fact that we could make much better decisions with data. So you really did transform the culture of the board in your presidency, and I want to thank you for that, for really leaving it in a different place than you, you came to it. The other thing is that, for any of you who've ever gone to a party with Katie, it's a little embarrassing, because she knows everyone in the community, and you just sort of sit there and trail behind her. But they always, the cliche is, the board is the eyes and the ears of the community, and Katie's like, her ears are this big, because she hears everything, she's out there, and it's not just her own neighborhood, I didn't mean your ears are big, but. She knows not only her own neighborhood and her own school, but she knows everyone across Evanston. She knows all the neighborhoods, the schools, young people, old people, and this really does impact the way you make decisions, because you don't think about your own neighborhood, you think about kids across the district, and how it not only impacts, impacts the school, but our community and our broader agencies, and that has been invaluable in your work on the board. So we're very grateful for that. The other thing that you brought to the board when I first began was, and people have talked about this tonight, your passion and your sense of fairness and equity. And you really were one of the strongest voices for recognizing needs for low-income kids who weren't in Title I schools, and you introduced a lot of conversations about how resources need to really follow kids who have needs, and it wasn't all about equal distribution. So you changed the conversation in a lot of ways by really focusing on the needs in the community, and that sense of compassion has been a huge part of that. And because I know you so well, two personal things I will mention, like Richard. And people talk about board service, and it's, it can be very stressful, because people really care about their kids, and they come to these conversations with a lot of emotion. It can be interesting, and it can also be kind of boring, when you get a package of, like, 150 things about purchase services or something like that. And you can always count on Katie, as we're sitting, struggling through a difficult conversation to say something a little off-color, like weird, and the entire room erupts into laughter. And that is gonna be, it's gonna be hard to get through some of those more boring meetings without Katie to snort and do those things. The other thing that has been really important to me in my working with you, and it's something that you've said you don't like about yourself, but I actually really like about you, which is you don't have the best memory for fights and for bad interactions. So over the last six years, we would have nights where Katie and I, like Richard, and like, a lot of us didn't always agree, in the old days particularly, we didn't agree on a lot of things, and we would have these incredibly kind of emotional and scary fights, and I'd go home and think, oh my God, she's never gonna speak to me again. And then in the morning, the phone would ring, she'd say, "Hey, how do you think that board meeting went?" And I'd be, "Oh my God, she's still talking to me?" So it's been a blessing that you actually told us the fact that we did fight. But in all seriousness, it's your wisdom and your guidance and your profound passion for the kids that we will miss the most. Thank you.
Okay, now I get to talk, right? So I actually did write something down. Okay, whatever he said, just so nice. But I did write something down, he brought it. I had to write it down, because I'm sure to forget, and, wow, so I, so I'm gonna start, and I've gotta be somewhere by eight, so you know we'll be done by then, okay? done by then, okay? I'm sure we'll be done by like five, although with me, you never know, right? Because I might go off a little bit on a subway. But one could say, my comments are my legacy, or my vaporware, right?
It's not vaporware.
If you use vaporware, right? Okay. Candace was giving me new words to use a few minutes ago. All right, so I'm gonna start, and I want to say a few things, I really do, and what you guys all sent me, so much to me, and I think I've finally stopped crying, and I'm not sure why, when people say nice things, but it really does touch on you, and I've, this service has meant a great deal to me. So I get a little emotional. Little things you should know, I also researched, how can you not cry? You really don't want to. And it really does not work. Okay, so my goal in my comments is to be pithy, but I, I'm not very good at that. And Winn said to me, "Okay, there's no way that's gonna work." So hopefully I'll be as clear and concise as I can, but I do want to kind of leave with some party thoughts and comments about everybody and what I've learned. The first thing I want to start with on the board is, how many times have people said to you, "We're so proud of this thankless service. Thank you for doing this, it's thankless service." And I want to start with, it's hard, it's complex, it's sometimes really long hours, it's interesting, it's exciting, but it is not thankless. It is full of thanks. And I want to start just by that. The first thing is, I can't tell you many times I've been thanked, I mean, well, first of all, tonight was pretty amazing. It doesn't always happen, it's almost like I've retired or something, which I guess I have, but, but I've been thanked in the grocery store, I've been stopped by people I don't know. I've had emails that were amazing. I've had people in schools come up to me. I am often thanked, so first of all, it is thank. The second thing is, it can't be thankless if you learn something. And, you know, Claudia, what you said is so generous, but I certainly am, I have learned a great deal, not just about education from the educators, but also about how to handle myself, that it's okay to cry, that it's okay, how do you lead? I am a stronger and better person because of my board's board service, so it is not thankless at all. And the third thing about it is, okay, I have made so many friends around this table out in the community, I, my life has been enriched because of my service, so it is far from thankless. So I'm gonna start with my thanks to you all. And I may get to Winn and my family to end, because really, they have put up with so much over eight years, but I want to start with thanking first my committee that helped run the campaigns that elected me. I want to thank the voters who elected me. I want to thank the community. I want to thank the Evanston District, Evanston, Skokie District 65 families. I want to thank our partners, 202, and our other partner and organizations. I want to thank all our staff at District 65, our employees, our teachers, our principals, our district administrators, our central office, board secretary, the boards I've worked with, both past and present. I thank you all for what you've taught me, and for the friendships that have been formed. It really has been an honor to work here. You know, eight years ago, I said, "Hey," my slogan, "How embarrassing is this?" But it was kind of good at the time, and it is still good now, but it was, "Come together for our kids." I think that was right, right? Come together for our kids. And I can't be here tonight without thanking the students. Our students are pretty amazing. The strategic plan presentation, our students, they speak volumes for what we do, and I want to thank all our students. Time has flown, right? The eighth grade kids that we came together for, many of them are graduating college now, including my own daughter. That is strange to me, how that happens. But we have accomplished a lot in eight years, and I want to just outline some of the things that I've thought of, some of them have been said. We did come together, we did learn to collaborate and work with each other and with others. We use data better, thanks to a lot of people in this community around this table. We've gone from meets to talking about college, career-ready, but one of the big changes, we're not just about achievement, we're about the whole child. Achievement is not defined by a test. It is more than that, and that, to me, is one of the biggest, most positive changes that we've talked about. We value community input, we used to say we value it, I know that we now actually do. Some people might think we oversurvey, but I think it's really important that we ask our staff, our teachers, our community, what they think. That's a big change. We've increased the time in school, both through a longer school day, but really, the change that this board and this administration has made, or how we handle discipline, has improved what happens for our kids. And I'm giving a shout-out right now to Bonnie Lockhart, who, eight years ago, had us look at suspension data. And that's, and I'm saying this because you need to look at the data, because that will help you make the change that you eventually need to make. We've improved our environmental footprint, we've done many, many building upgrades and additions, with 18 buildings, Mary, yeah. You've got a lot of work to do, and there are real challenges. We've come very far with how we are managing and upgrading our buildings. In finance, we've had balanced budgets all eight years I've been on the board. We've had only one year where we haven't met our numbers. We've had to work hard, and we've had to make tough choices, and we're gonna have tough choices ahead. We can't do it alone, and I encourage us all to work to impact the state, because the state has to do its fair share in education in Illinois, it's just a shame. In terms of instruction, we have had so many initiatives, but I think what we have learned is the interaction between stu-, or maybe what I've learned and what teachers have already known, that that interaction between the student and the teacher has the biggest impact on instruction, and we can learn a lot from talking to our teachers and talking to our students about that interaction. We talked about equity, and I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about a field referendum, because that was under my tenure on the board. It was really hard, but somebody said to me, a very wise person, said that through loss and through failure, you learn something, and I hope we did, come away learning something about equity, and that we're still talking about it. I want you to remember this, the burden and busing, though, is still not shared evenly across the district, and I don't believe that's right, and I think we need to talk about it. We're focused on the gap, which we need to be, but we're not just talking about income. We do have a race gap in our district, and we need to look at that. And if we don't look at the data, and thank you that it's one of our outcome measures, we can't make the change that we need to have happen. And I've sat through two strategic planning processes, and I feel like with our current plan tied to the five essentials and the process that we'll put forward, that we really are on the path to continued success in great shape. And I look around this room with the administrators, the leaders, the teachers that are here, we are on the path for that. Paul, I'm gonna say to you that you are collaborative, customer-oriented, whole-child centric, and you know that partnerships matter, you believe in and act on collective impact, and the strategic plan is presented as something that we'll all get behind, and we're better that you chose to come work here, and I thank you for that. Jennifer, I want, I wish you good luck. You will listen, you'll learn, and you'll be a great addition to this board. Omar, thank you for saying yes. Thank you for joining us when we needed you to, and for running a great campaign, for coming on this board. You bring needed skills and expertise, and we are so lucky to have you. Claudia, I think you might think that I was gonna start to say, "Thank you, always having a teacher perspective," but I want to thank you for always having the family and kid perspective, and it is a great perspective that you bring. I think the wealth and knowledge you bring as a teacher is incredibly important, and I thank you for that. But you do always ask about families and kids, and to a point where sometimes it's, I remember that one vote, and you know which vote I might, I'm not that interested in a vote, but, I mean, but it was, because it could impact families, and so I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate that you really bring up a middle school focus, and don't lose that, because I think sometimes we talk early childhood, and we talk about high school, but our middle school is an incredibly, incredibly important period of transition, and that ages, and so thank you, don't lose that. Where am I going next? Oh, Candace. Man, you do so much, and you do it well. That strategic planning process that you led us through was thorough, it was well-done, and the process set the plan up for success. It was more than just the optics were awesome, but it was an awesomely put-together plan, and I thank you for that. I appreciate your commitment to understanding the needs of all students, and your compassion for others, for looking and forcing us to look not just at poverty, but the depth of poverty, and for looking at the achievement crap, gap across the district and by school. And I know that you'll be asking those questions, and I thank you for that. Suni, we did get to be friends during the referendum, I thank you for your work on that, and for your commitment just to this board. You are a great voice on the board. You remind us to expand our thoughts from the micro level to the very level. It's funny, you said that about me. It's so nice. What do you think I learned there? I know. That's what I was thinking. You understand and expect us to think about the consequences of our votes and decisions, and to bring in many points of view, so thank you for that. Okay, I am really glad you ran, Richard, but it's not just so that tonight could be all about me, I'm glad. I'm glad that you're serving for four more years. I think institutional knowledge and expertise is really important to have on a board, and you bring a lot of it. And it's funny, it is funny that comments that everybody's brought up are things that I wrote too. We have not always agreed, but as Tracy said, I forget a lot of that, but people have told me. No. I don't think we ever expect two board members to agree on every issue. I mean, disagreement and, that's how we learn, it's how we grow. What I appreciate about you, what you appreciate about me, I guess, is that regardless of the issue and our positions, we've always worked together. You ran great finance meetings, some of the best, and most efficient. I learned a lot through meetings that you ran. You worked hard to make the budget and the process transparent, and you pushed us to get it filmed, which it needs to, because I say to people all the time, "If you want to know what's going on in this district, watch the finance meeting." So much has impacted my finance, so thank you for doing that. Your expertise in technology has also been a value add in our decision-making, so thank you. Okay, Tracy. I don't know if any of you know that Tracy, some of those women ran my first campaign. So we've been, there's some really funny stories that I could tell, but I only have about one minute more, which I'm gonna go over. It's really hard to think what it's gonna be like when you serve on a board with one of your closest friends, and it is sometimes hard. See, now, ah, what a, does it work? Doesn't work, see, I'm still crying. Okay, I know we're not always gonna agree, but we have learned so much from each other that it has been great, and to go through in board service and come out closer at the end is pretty amazing. I often say that Tracy is a dog with a bone, but maybe sometimes I'm a dog with a bone too. I just have the other bone, and I want my bone to win. You bring a thoughtful intelligence to complex issues. I think you pushed us on data. You've set standards high for all children, you're thorough, you're willing to dig deep, and you understand achievement and the consequences of our decisions. I'm gonna use this as an example, it's a small example. You're spot-on about grammar, and it's not just that it needs to be taught, but we need to be measured. And your comment to me, and this is something I'd never thought about, your comment about equity in terms of grammar is an example of one of the many nuanced points you make that brings home an issue. So keep doing it, keep advocating for kids, keep thinking that way, because your points can change people. You've been a great board president the last two years, and you've set us up well for the future, and your leadership is critical now with the new board and the administration. So now I'm gonna go with my five pieces of advice, I have to do it real quick. One is about historical information. I do think it's important. I bring it, but I think I have it because I know that it's important to decisions I've made. So that's probably why I know 10 or 15 years back, because I had to make decisions, and it's important to understand. There's a lot of new people around this room, but there's a lot of people in this room, Paul or Richard, I don't know, point people out, who bring historical knowledge. So it doesn't have to dictate your decision, but it should come into play. Use that strategic plan as your guidepost, because you can't do everything, and lots will come your way. I always say as a board member, you should look beyond your own expertise. Look to other people, try to understand other people's experiences, see something through somebody else's eyes. Some decisions, there's no good choice, and you still have to make it. And finally, communication and transparency, it matters. People I have found are okay if you don't necessarily, they don't necessarily agree with you, but if you can explain it and be transparent, they're gonna appreciate it. So that's my words of wisdom. And now I've got a little final thank you, one to my friends that are out here tonight who are so awesome, and you guys are too, but you had to be here. No, that, what you don't know is I, not, in addition to talking a lot, have to process a lot, and so thank you to my friends who have helped me process things over the years, and for all your support. Okay, Winn, you're the best, my husband, like, behind the scenes, my biggest supporter, and it really doesn't work. I couldn't have done what I've done without you. Those of you who don't know Winn, know that's true. He is calm where I'm not. He helps me with all my controversial issues that I address. He has taught me to abide by the 24-hour rule, which we all should. I'm like, "Send, send, send." He's like, "24 hours." He, everybody should have a partner like you. Love you. Okay, now, my kids, who you might notice are missing, but my Charlie Bailey is here. Stand up, stand up for the three boys, and Abby. You guys, my third child. Abby and Hunter are studying for finals, and Sam is getting ready for Mudlark Play, please feel free to go see it. My kids loved Monday nights. Most kids, I think, my mom's, my kids are like, "Monday nights, yes." So sadly, I will be all Monday nights. There are many funny stories about coming home at Monday night, everybody's sound asleep, but somehow the channel's set to 19. You know, I started out helping out at schools because of you guys, but it's been way beyond there. So there's two things I want to leave you with tonight, and then I'm done. One is, I hope you recognize my children, if you don't already, how lucky you are to have gone to school in Evanston, with the schools, and the teachers, and the resources, and the teachers who are there and made a difference for you in your lives, and are doing it every day for other kids, so recognize that. The second thing I want you to take away from my service is I believe we're called to do whatever we can to give back to our community, and to work to make communities better, not, both for ourselves, but really for others. And so as I go off the board, that's what I want you to take from my service. I hope that it's taught you the importance of giving back to your community. I have been blessed to do this for eight years, but there's lots of forms of community service, and I hope that that's what you take from my experience here, to give back. And so with that, I bid you all adieu. Oh, we are.
Do we have someone?
Great. It's not over yet.
So Katie, we have several things for you. One is your set of flowers and your nameplates.
Oh, that's good. You're the one that says Mrs., oh, you're two.
And then on behalf of all of us, we have this absolutely stunning clock that says Katie Bailey, Evanston, Skokie, School District 65, 2007, 2015, and I just carved an "and beyond."
Yeah. Come hell, all, anything you need.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here. Can we take a picture of the fold that I think we hold?
Because she's walking around.
Yeah. And then, yeah.
Oh, take a picture.
Yeah. Can I write? Can I write?
Okay.
Yeah. You say Katie in the traffic.
All right, here's another ring here. Thanks. All right, ready? All right, now we're on to the presentation of official election results. Do we need to adjourn? No. Katie, you're still here.
I do, Katie, you're still here.
Okay.
Just imagine how long that would have been if there were three departing board members.
Two of them were men.
So, based on the official results, the following individuals secured a seat for a four-year term commencing today, May 4, 2015, until the next board reorganization meeting following the general elections in April 2019. Those individuals are Omar Brown, Jennifer Phillips, and Richard Rikis.
And now we'll do the squaring in, the Utah Vals. I guess it's very interesting.
We have a strategic plan.
Don't get carried away there.
No, I'm sorry.
Right here? So, you have to actually, must get, did you memorize it? So, I think you can just start, I see your name, and then you can say it together. Let's start with I, Richard.
I, Richard Rikis.
I, Jennifer Phillips.
I, Omar Brown.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of Board of Education of Evanston, Skokie, School District 65, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall honor and respect the free expression of opinion of all board members and others who seek to interfere in the board's work while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by majority votes at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and striking channels.
That was well done. Okay. So, I think now you sign, and then... Congratulations. You're welcome. Okay, now we will have the appointment of the President and Secretary Pro Tem. Candace?
This one? Sorry. Thought everything was Tracy.
What?
Thought everything was Katie. I move that the Board of Education appoint Paul Goran as the President Pro Tem and Adila Kareshi as Secretary Pro Tem until the President and Secretary are elected.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. And now, Katie, your last motion.
In Latin, you realize. I move the Board of Education adjourn, adjourn, sine dae, eight, seven, eight or seven p.m., this fourth day of May 2015.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, now we adjourn. And then we'll take a picture of the new board and make the meeting. Is that sure?
Okay.
And now we'll proceed, oh, we have a roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Chow?
Here.
Ms. Cartha?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rikis?
Here.
Ms. Garrison?
Here.
I'm gonna proceed with the election of officers and start with President. And so, only Ms. Quattrucci has submitted a letter of interest in serving as the President of the District 65 School Board. Are there any nominations, including self-nominations, for this position? If none, if none, may we vote, may we have a vote to elect Ms. Quattrucci as Board President for the duration of one year.
I would like, what do we do? I would like to nominate you. Second it? Does it only need a second?
I'll second.
And shall we take a roll call?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes.
And the eyes have it. And now it is yours. So much fun.
Okay, so now, only Mr. Rikis has submitted a letter of interest in serving as Vice President of the District 65 School Board. Are there any other nominations, including self-nominations, for this position? If none, may we have a vote to elect Mr. Rikis as Vice President for the period of one year.
Second?
You would like to vote.
Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Now, Secretary Omar?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation to elect Adila Kareshi as Secretary for the Evanston-Skokie School District 65 Board of Education until its next reorganization meeting in 2017.
I second.
Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Now, I'll have the adoption of the Code of Conduct for members of the school board, Claudia.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the attached Code of Conduct recommended by the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Now, the next item is the committee appointments and school liaison appointments, which we worked out, we talked about, people put in their ideas for positions they're interested in. I want you all to look at this. We don't have to vote if there are any questions, or are we gonna rearrange anything, but this is what I think...
Is that wrong?
Oh, that's the legislative, oh, we've got that, that's, yeah. The city school liaison is right, the joint District 202 legislative, that's...
Not.
That's not right. That's Tracy and Richard. Everything else looks right to me. Is there something else?
I was staying on finance.
Pardon?
I thought I was staying on finance.
Everyone, well, remember we talked about everyone being, but you are gonna be on policy because it was on Mondays now. But if, shall we, shall we vote in a week and have more discussion?
Yes.
Okay. But we just wanted to get out there, so that, you wanna talk about the finance, Omar?
So, does that mean I go to the city school liaison committee meeting this week? Or am I not?
No, you should go. I think you should go. Because that's, the only one in question will be, the question is, if Jennifer and Claudia want to switch the policy and the finance, but we can...
We can talk about that.
We can talk, you all can have that conversation. But everything else, are there any other missteps? Okay. All right, so we'll vote on that at the next meeting. Now, we're gonna review the draft of the 2016-17 school year calendar. And Melissa, are you?
Beatrice is gonna take the...
Okay, sorry.
Working collaboratively. So, a few things, I'd like to start by thanking everyone who participated in the survey. We had 2,239 participants, which is amazing. So, thank you to everyone who took the time to take the survey so that it can help inform the development of the 2016-17 school calendar, but also in years to come. And the one thing I, the committee met on April the 27th, and that was really the first opportunity that we've had to kind of review, I would say review is an accurate word, the survey results. And so, the options that are being presented are really being presented as options. I wouldn't call them drafts at this point. They've been shared with the committee via email, and we're actually having a meeting on this Wednesday, May 6th, to really kind of hash through them a little bit. The options were developed using the feedback from the survey and the initial feedback from the calendar committee on that April 27th meeting. There are still a few challenges that need to be addressed, and I think it's important to mention that if we're going to make some significant changes to the school calendars moving forward, there will need to be some conversations between the district administration and our district educators council for issues that may impact collective bargaining agreement language. So, for instance, if teachers are starting prior to August 20th, we need to discuss that. As well as, another piece of this was our professional learning. Right now, we have our half-day Wednesdays, and if we were going to change what that looks like in terms of how that would change or could possibly impact the working conditions of our teachers in terms of their planning time and things like that, that contractually they're entitled to. So, there are some things that we still really need to work to or think through, and it may be that some of these changes are not going to be realistically implemented until the 17, 18 school year. But we are certainly, the purpose of collecting this data was to impact 16, 17, and, and again, the years beyond. So, tonight, we did share the survey data, and we presented some options. And one of the things that we took away from this data is that it's very important to a majority of the respondents that in terms of calendar alignment between 202 and 65, which is really what we've been working towards, and which we were successful for, for the 15, 16 school year, the winter and spring recess alignments are very important. Some areas where we feel we still need some guidance are around the start dates of the school year. Again, with the two districts perhaps having some different needs. I think the high school, they are considering some options where they would be starting earlier, where their teachers would be coming back. I believe it is August the 18th, and their students would be starting on the 22nd. One of the options we present is kind of a, an in-between, a mid-week start, where our students would start on a Wednesday, and our teachers would come back on a Monday. So, maybe in some ways trying to compromise where we're coming close, but we may not get to that same start date for students. And so, we're hoping to, the committee is looking for some guidance in terms of expectations from the board with regards to the start date as well. And are we looking for full calendar alignment? Or are we looking for, in terms of, you know, our survey respondent results where we have the winter recess and the spring recess aligned, but perhaps not our start dates. But they can be close, but maybe not the exact start.
I just asked a real quick question on that start date comment on the first page, where it says, "Committee does not recommend starting earlier than the 4th Monday of August." Goes further down to say, it says, "Note that parents nor staff..." Should it be, "Note that neither parents nor staff thought that it was important?" It's on page, sorry, 18? And it's about the start, the start date. What I'm interpreting this is, is that neither parents nor staff thought it was absolutely important to align with 202. Is that correct?
I don't want to say they didn't think it was important to align to 202. I do think there's, within the open comment area, as well as the questions that were specifically asked, there is a large number of respondents who felt that it would be undesirable to start earlier in August, and also many open comments stated they would prefer actually like an after Labor Day start date. So, that's reflected in one of the calendar options as well.
Okay, but I guess my real question is, should this say, "Note that neither parents nor staff"?
Yes, so isn't that, in the survey, there was a question that asked parents and staff to indicate their support for starting earlier than the 4th Monday in August if 202 chose to start earlier than the 4th Monday in August. Both parents and staff said were not overly supportive of that. They were opposed to starting prior to the 4th Monday. They were opposed to starting prior to the 4th Monday of August, both groups.
And again, the most consistent data here, from the variety of opinions, was that the winter holiday and the spring holiday would be consistent across both districts.
Was that just from the rank ordering of which ones are the most important? So, in a sense, you get a sense that it's more important for those two, but...
Yes, so in the rank ordering, staff and parents had both indicated winter and spring recess to be more important for alignment than the start date. And then there was that separate question about their support for starting earlier than the 4th Monday, which was separate from the ranking question.
Did the question say, "Starting earlier than the 4th Monday if 202 was starting later?"
Yes.
It did, okay.
If, if 202 was starting earlier.
Earlier. So, they, and you know that that's the condition under which you're starting later.
And was that the earlier question? Since so, many of these have similar, are asking similar things. Which, which question was, was the, it was the one that says, "Starting earlier than the 4th Monday in August." Is that correct, like on page 18? That was the question that said?
That doesn't say.
Is that the question?
It's Q7.
Which page are the questions on?
Summary doesn't have the question.
Are the questions themselves, the survey in the packet?
They are in the packet.
Do you know what page they are in, in the package?
So, it's page 75, Q7. The District 202 starts earlier than the 4th Monday in August. How likely are you to support District 65 starting earlier than the 4th Monday?
Any questions about, Jennifer?
I had a question about the response rate.
Okay.
And wanted to hear what you, what your interpretation of this data is, given the response rate for teachers and for the community. And one of the questions I had was, there was a strategic plan survey that asked some similar questions, and some of that was sort of, not dismissed, but the response rate was not as high as you wanted it to be, so that, how you use that data comes into question. So, my question is, what is your interpretation of this response rate? Is it enough to go on to make these decisions?
I think there's a, you know, over 2,000 respondents, I think is a large number. I think we're using this information to help guide the work of the committee, and that it's certainly something that we're going to take into consideration. I also do think that just because of when the window closed and the short amount of time the committee has had to meet, that we do need more time to really kind of dig deeper into it.
I was just going to point out, I thought it was interesting, the high support there was for a late start. And, you know, I think that's something that has been talked about, and the percentages of a late start within a certain day.
Richard, are you talking about late start?
Like snow days?
Yeah, yes. And thank you for clarifying that. We, it had been talked about as an idea, and it just seems like for both groups that were surveyed, there was very strong support for that. That stood out to me.
It seemed like from this, you know, there's about 20% of the respondents said they had overlap of students, the children and students in both districts. And I was just wondering if we know, if we know how that, if that is proportionate to what it really is, because I, and, you know, because I don't know, and if it is 20%, then I would believe these results. If it's different, then that would potentially skew, you know, my vantage point on what the, if these results are representative.
Yeah, so I think we looked at it, and you had some statistics that we looked at, Melissa, where 20% is a little bit higher than the percentage, but not by that much. So, I think the number is between 12 and 15% of parents in D65 also have students in 202.
Okay.
So, it's pretty representative, and you can see the total number of parents, parents is about 1,500. So, if the average number of children per family is between 1 and 2, this would be a response rate somewhere between a third and a half. So, it's a fairly substantial percentage of our parents.
So, is there any way to, to look at whether there's a vast difference in those particular responses among that 20%, meaning, you know, the families that are, do have kids in both districts, and how they respond to the alignment of start date? I would just be curious about that, that one question in particular, to see if it's consistent with the general, you know, general feeling, or if it's vastly different. I think that would help to inform us as we look forward.
I think that's a good, a good idea.
Can we run, can we run the data that way?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yes, we can try.
Great.
So, the next step in this is that you're going back to both the individual 65 committee and the joint committee to talk about it, and then bring it back to us with some firmer recommendations?
Yes, there was a joint meeting just last week that Melissa attended. We shared our actions with them. They are also considering the winter break options, so the way we have it presented and the different options, there's two full weeks, and then there's kind of like a midweek to midweek, and that's because of how late holidays are falling. So, that's something that's still on the table for, for both school districts. We have our meeting on 6th, we're going to be following up again, I think with them on May 11th, and then we'll be able to bring some drafts. Candace, I appreciate what you said about trying to look at that 20% of our parents who have children in both districts. I am wondering, though, before we end this discussion tonight, if, I don't know if you're able to offer any thoughts in terms of whether it's a full alignment and the importance of the start date is. Because otherwise, what I'm thinking is, we may end up having to bring back maybe two options for you, one with an aligned start date, and one that maybe may be what we feel is in the best interest of District 65, with other dates aligned as best as possible.
I think that's a really good question, and it's something we've been grappling with, that we set those parameters for you. And it was my hope that we would talk with both boards and say, at the board level, what kind of guidance would we like to give. We didn't have that opportunity at our last meeting, and so I'm not sure when we'll have it again. We will have another committee meeting. I'm not sure what you all's feelings are. I was sort of hoping there'd be something very definitive in the survey, that would say yes or no, and it sounds like it's kind of in the middle there, that it's one of the priorities, but maybe not the top, but it's hard to know whether, you know, was it this close to the top priority, or was it farther, you know, was it further away than that? So, what are you all's thoughts about making a decision about the start date's alignment?
I think the difficulty is that our buildings are not, not all of our buildings are equipped to have an earlier start date. I mean, I know that death and the teachers have brought to our attention before that in August, it's just too hot in buildings that aren't air-conditioned to have productive start times, you know, that early. And so, while I think it is a priority to align, I'm not sure that we can do that currently until, you know, we, we can, I just, I don't think we can insist that it is a priority at this point.
Any other thoughts?
I would agree with Suni. I mean, I think we're still waiting to hear more, but if, if we align the winter breaks and spring breaks and everything else, how big of a change or shift would it be to have different start dates? I mean, I guess that's really the question.
Well, I think if you look at option, let's see which option it is. Option A, listen to me.
Well, I would say option C seems to start too, I guess, I like option B. Option C seems to start too late, and option A seems to start too early, so...
Well, option A, I think would maybe be a compromise between where District 202 may be thinking of starting their school year and where we could possibly start, because option A would have our teachers coming back on August the 22nd, which is a Monday, and then our children would start back on the 24th. And I think what the high school is looking at is having their teachers return on the 18th and having their students start on the 22nd, so that would, somewhat close.
Let me also call attention, the obvious one, to both ends of the bookends. So, it's both the starting date and then the last day of school.
I saw on a Monday, which I thought was...
So, again, as we manage and manage better as we move forward, the snow dates, you have to look at what the optional snow date, recovery days are in June, as well when making these tough choices.
But I have to bring up what has come up in the past when this has been considered, is there are those families that have the older siblings watching the younger siblings, and that is very concerning, because you could imagine a day or two here or there, or a half-day on Wednesdays, but a week of children who might not have that supervision, I think is a concern.
So, in doing your analysis, have you looked at neighboring school districts to see what they do in terms of their K-8 and their high school alignments?
We discussed that a little bit at the joint committee meeting. It seems that, from what we heard from the high school, that a lot of the districts on the North Shore are starting earlier and earlier, and their feeder districts don't have the same start date where there is an alignment between them. Because I think it's just recognizing the district need, the different needs of serving elementary students and high school students. One of the things that also came up at the joint meeting was talking about, you know, getting close to the start date, start date, same start date, but also looking at options for childcare, and whether or not we can partner with community organizations within the city to provide some sort of childcare options or, for, within district as well.
That's interesting, and I do think when we compare to other districts, which I, I like benchmarking in that way, comparing to some of the North Shore communities might not be the best. I certainly understand why you would go there naturally, but, you know, in terms of income, to be able to pay for children to go somewhere, I think some of those communities have a different composition than what our district is made up of, and that's, that's the concern that I have.
And maybe even better is comparable districts.
Right. I mean, even some of the ones that Peter has noted as comparable districts.
But again, the drive that we know from our colleagues at the high school is to create a schedule of the high school that would get the examinations finalized before the holidays, before the winter holidays. And so, that sets, their constraint sets, and so that then has an impact on this.
One of the, kind of the million-dollar question that we had posed before, and since we're not meeting here as joint boards, we can't necessarily answer, but to your question, Beatrice, the importance of the alignment of start date, to me, in many parts, depends on whether this is one step for the high school towards an even earlier start date. I, I think, based on this data, and we have to disaggregate it a little bit, but my, my inkling is that the majority of our families don't think it's as critical as some other things, and, you know, they are pushing for later, although you also hear, you see in the comments too, about just as many people pushing for, you know, all your, all your school. So, there's this, this tension between, you know, many families wanting to start later after Labor Day and get out earlier, so they preserve the summer for kids, and then just as many wanting to have all your school because of learning loss and all those other things. So, you know, it's, that's a catch-22. But I, based on, like, trying to summarize what I see, I think that I would not push as much as I would have coming into this to say that start date is a, is a stake in the ground, in terms of alignment. But I do, I do really wonder, you know, if it's something that we could get within a few days, but putting it within a few days, if the high school is then going to move earlier, that, that doesn't seem to make sense to me.
And I do think for the 16, 17, and maybe within a school days, but to Dr. Gorn's point a few moments ago, even with the high school students starting on August 22nd in 2016, their final exams still will not take place prior to the winter recess. Actually, in order for that to happen, they are going to have to start earlier, so...
Yeah, so...
So, for 2016, they might have an earlier start date?
So, what I'm saying is, for, for the drafts that we have proposed now, in terms of what 202 has shared with us and what our dates are, if they have their students starting on August the 22nd, they still will not have enough instructional time to have their final exams prior to the winter recess. So, they would come back, have a, a review period, and then have their, administer their final examinations.
So, it's a gradual, it's moving towards that.
Could possibly be.
So, that says a lot to me, and how I would make a decision on this.
That's a good point.
And based on the information we have, then I would lean towards kind of preserving, you know, the last, whatever, week of the month or near the end of the month, for us.
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, a complete alignment, I'm not sure is a real priority for me. Again, given what I know about, you know, the air conditioning and things in the buildings, and also if there is this other agenda for the high school to move ever earlier, that just wouldn't probably be suitable for our students, I don't think.
Well, that's the question I was going to get to, is when we think about all these considerations, what's most important for the kids to be able to succeed? And I'm not sure what that answer is, but I think your point is really good, Wendy Candace, so I'm glad you surfaced it.
Well, I have to bring up the historical knowledge, you talk about it. We did study the temperatures, and I'm not saying that, you know, this is definitive, but the temperatures in late August and those in early June, there was not a difference in that, so you're trading off one hot period for another. And we have, we do have air conditioning now in all of our classrooms, and five years ago, we didn't, so it was more of a consideration.
One difference is, though, that in late August, you have students who are actually happy to be back at school, and very excited to be there, and also ready to learn, whereas in early June, you've got students who are so waiting for the year to be over. And it's not the best instructional time, early June.
So, that would advocate for starting earlier.
A little earlier.
You're arguing against yourself. Okay. No, I, I think probably then the best thing would do, would be to talk more to the high school, see if you can get any clarity on whether this is just one step that leads to an earlier start date, and then bring back the drafts, unless we have further questions.
And we can bring, the data that Jennifer pushed on, we can, we can bring back.
Can I point out one other sort of data point, looking at three options, and that is, I think there was a parent in one of the last meetings that this, the calendar was brought up, that talked about interrupted weeks of instruction and counting weeks. I think that's worth noting in the analysis as we go through, that options A, B, and C have different numbers of what I'd call broken or interrupted weeks of instruction, and I think that's worth considering, to Richard's question about what works best for kids to be successful in school.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I don't know which option I used. The option I used, I counted, we had 18 total weeks of uninterrupted instruction, and that's out of 10 months. I mean, right, so...
Draft A has 20.
I would, I would be more inclined to set as a goal, quite frankly, as a board, to get to 20, like, to get to at least half the time.
Five whole week's instruction.
That you're having. For me, that seems to be a more content-driven type of goal to, for us to come together on, and the consistency of instructional time. I'm not saying that's the right number, but something that, you know, as a board, we might discuss.
Just to, I'll begin again, is there any research that says that a four-and-a-half day, or four-day week is much less productive than a five-day week? I'm just curious about that, because we talked before about these interrupted weeks, and I'm just wondering if, I, I just don't know that. Is that...
I'd say that it'd be, it's instructional time.
I realize it's time, but it's just spread out differently. It's not that we're actually not having the dates in school, it's just that we're doing four-day weeks instead of five, and I'm just curious about whether that's actually damaged, you know, the traction of learning.
I'm not aware of any research on one side or the other. As a teacher, I mean, you kind of build your week around the five days, and so for teacher planning, it's, it's just another wrinkle, a challenge to have.
Yeah, and as a teacher, you know in advance when your four-day weeks are, so you plan accordingly.
So, on half-day weeks, like spelling tests?
No, half-days, I, I get that.
Or any kind of four-day week, like a spelling test is a good example of how you plan for something that ends with a spelling test at the end of the week, and then...
The kids wouldn't have word study, or they would, you know, so there are changes. I, I think that's a really good point. I mean, I think we have to look at data. From the most compelling data...
So on half day weeks, like spelling tests.
No, half days, I get that.
Or any kind of four day week, like a spelling test is a good example of how you plan for something that ends with a spelling test at the end of the week and then.
The kids wouldn't have word study or they would, you know, so there are changes. I, I think that's a really good point. I mean, I think we have to look at data. From the most compelling data that I've heard has been from parents, particularly of special needs students and kids who, and kids, and I think every kid, the younger they are, need routine. But consistency of routine and the, and building on the cadence of, of the school week does make a difference, both in behavioral, you know, behaviorally and then translated into academics. But I don't, I can't cite a report, so, but I, I think it's a good question. Is that, how valid is that?
And continuing on the theme of what could be best for kids, I think one of the points we heard some of the staff make regarding the start date was that the temperature, because I think I raised the point that temperatures are similar, but that the building has been sitting in the warm summer, all summer. And so that often at the end of August, yes, the classrooms are air conditioned, but we still have lots of group spaces like auditoriums or lunchrooms or gyms that aren't. And so at the end of the summer, because they've been heated all year, all summer, it can be a bit more challenging if we start earlier. And so again, thinking about what's going to set kids up for success, you know, kind of, but I get also your point of in June, kids are ready to be done.
But, but I would have to say that from the perspective of too much, too far, too soon in August would just be really miserable because they could lose their enthusiasm very quickly. If there's, you know.
I have one other question, just, just about, because as Jennifer was saying that, there was a question here around days that are currently non-attendance that you might consider, or a couple of questions you might consider being attended. But I didn't think we, so we parsed out Pulaski and Columbus Day and then President's Day. Veterans Day. Is there a reason we didn't ask about Veterans Day? Seems like a good target to me.
And this, I guess, would go again with the alignment for district, with District two oh two. We shared with them the holidays or days we were looking at in terms of non-attendance days. And I do believe Veterans Day is a day that they would not consider, they would keep it as a non-attendance day.
Okay.
So it was.
A reason or just, is it the time of year?
I think to honor our nation's veterans, and I think it's the symbolism of the holiday.
Okay, well, I don't see a big difference between that and President. So they were, they were okay with looking potentially at a President's Day, but not Veterans Day. Okay.
And currently, they do use President's Day as a possible emergency day.
When you look at those uninterrupted weeks, you know, that
That one always falls in the middle.
That fall, the fall period, you know, that.
Could it be the timing of?
It might be the timing.
Because it falls before winter, right, Veterans Day?
It's always the second Tuesday in November.
Yeah, so the other days, we can recoup, like we have gone through the snow period for President's Day and Casimir Pulaski. And I don't know if that's some of the rationale.
Any other questions?
I guess the, just the other thing, looking at this, thinking about what I was trying to make, the point I was trying to make before, is that if you look at April and May, there are less interruptions in April and May than in any other month. And again, that's toward the end of the year. And, and again, that might be not as valuable time as the beginning of the year.
That's a really good point. That's a really good point.
Although it's testing, testing time.
That is right.
Well, that's a different issue.
Sure is.
Sunny?
I mean, the other thing, obviously, that there were lots of comments on it that historically has always been sort of a touch point is the whole idea, the half days. And, you know, we had a question in there about mimicking what the high school does and doing early release on every Monday. I don't remember if that was part of the question.
It was.
Would it, no, did it say that we were asking that because that's what the high school does? Or did it just ask about?
I don't think it represents.
Because I feel like a lot of people were wondering, like, why would we even consider that? You know, it would have been good probably to give that context of we're asking this because it's what the high school is already doing for their students. So it's not kind of as much of a question out there. But obviously, like the big concern, in addition to, you know, having more interruption, is, you know, concern for working parents who have difficulty in finding childcare. And then also the concerns about, is the half day even worthwhile? And so I wonder if we can, as we're discussing that, and can brainstorm ideas, because obviously we need to have professional development built into the calendar. But if there's a way that we can, if we keep it on the half day Wednesdays, you know, have we ever tried like making sure, like instead of actually making it an early release, like having, if we do assemblies, have assemblies always on the second half of the day when the teachers are released, but the students wouldn't necessarily have to be released or, you know, something like that. Or if we change to Mondays, how could we have it so, it doesn't necessarily have to be a release day that we can just have, you know, work with our community partners to provide other, maybe like fun instructional, like STEM activities or something of that nature that we wouldn't actually have to release the students, but the teachers are still going to get their professional development time.
Who's supervising the students at the
I don't know, would we have like substitutes, which I know obviously costs. But I just think, you know, if it, if this is, all I'm saying is it's raised time and time again as a concern of our community members that the early release days. So if there's a way that we can come up with some creative ideas of how we can not, still give teachers the time that they need, but also keep the students in school and figure out.
So there are obviously a lot of complexities here.
Absolutely. I'm not saying that there aren't.
And yet the piece about professional learning is really quite essential for all staff in the district. And then how to do that in a way that meets community needs is where the complexity hits. The idea around Monday wasn't just to mimic the high school, but it was actually to take advantage of the fact that the high school was, was doing their professional learning then. And to, really, the idea, and it's a brainstormed idea because we haven't worked out any of the details, was that if we look at the strategic plan, we look at all the professional learning that's embedded in, how would we actually find the time for professionals to learn with each other and from each other and from others in a way that would have the least amount of impact on our parents and family members and our children? And, and so again, that's the driving point of finding the parallel point with the high school, which does release every Monday afternoon early. And so it was sort of saying to ourselves, if we are a professional learning culture, which we are, and we want to be sensitive to our community, which we do, then how could we do this in a consistent way? And so one solution strategy is to, to think about Monday afternoons. The coverage of children, it's a wonderful idea to think about our community partners and how to expand the type of activities that might be there. I think the idea of assemblies or substitutes, that becomes a cost factor in all, in all of the above, which makes the
But I just feel like, you know, if we at least explore the option and then explore like how much of a cost factor. If we did it as assemblies, we wouldn't, would we necessarily need as many substitutes? Like, I don't know, just something to address the concerns that continue to be raised about, you know, having that as early dismissal time.
Here's some institutional history. Two years ago, I think I spoke before all of you, asking about whether the district could look at the ISB waiver process that other districts have done to combine, you know, thinking about this, that hundred and seventy six days and that, you know, that we already have bank time, but there are many districts that consolidate their half days and ask for an ISB waiver so that you can have three or four whole professional development days that may be easier for working parents if you're going to, you know, have to take a day that you have the whole day. The question is, does that work for teachers? Does that, is a whole day of professional development a good thing, a net good thing versus seven half days? I don't know the answer to that question. But there are districts that have gone down this road.
And I think I would add to what Paul said, and is that we really should be starting this part of, that part of the conversation around professional learning with the strategic priorities and goals around professional learning. And then back away from that, what is the right design, right? We obviously need to take our families into consideration when we're executing on that and how we do it and doing it thoughtfully. But we should start with what is the right design for this education and professional learning? And from what I read and know, I think there is a, there's a compelling argument for me that part of that design is more ongoing, you know, professional learning, professional to professional, where you have an opportunity to reflect on your practice on a regular basis and it's embedded into the work that you're doing. It may, it may be that we can't get, we shouldn't or we can't get to, that's once every week. And maybe there's some potential for a hybrid because there's different types of learning that need to go on in a year. And maybe there's a, you know, some month, a one or a few months that you need a more substantive period of time. And then we could have also some periods where we have the more, the smaller, more frequent periods. I don't know what that answer is, but I think we have to start with, you know, you guys telling us what, what is the right thing for the best outcomes for kids? And ergo, I mean, the best learning for teachers, and then we work back from there. Because that's the way we would educate the community. I do think that part of the reason why folks, and we've come, you know, as Rhonda will point out, we've come leaps and bounds from ten years ago, at least having the consistent Wednesdays and half days from, from what the calendar used to be. I think one of our downfalls is that we haven't necessarily educated the community on the value of those days from, and how it really affects them. You know, how is it going to make their, their children's lives better because it's helping our teachers? And, and so if we make a shift, we need to make sure that that messaging is in place, that it's really clear to everybody that we're doing this because, because of the outcomes we're trying to achieve.
So I don't think that's something that we would be able to entertain until we have a very substantive conversation about it for the following year, because this is a long term. I do think in the short term, we could visit how those half days are used in the middle schools. Because I think the feedback we've gotten consistently, and I think a lot of us have experienced, is that when the children have a succession of short periods, nothing happens during those days. And I, I think it's an illusion that they're going through the day, but it seems to be only that. So maybe if we could just substitute something out that would be experiential or project-based or something that we would actually use those half days, I would feel better about not
That's a good idea.
Having, you have at least a year lifetime before we can restructure anything on professional learning.
Great idea on both points, on your latter point, and we should, we should explore on the earlier point about when would, if we had, if the idea, if we, if, when we work out an idea that actually makes sense to build upon the professional culture that we have so we can grow it even more to be able to propose that. We don't have the time to do that for sixteen seventeen. That's a, a year from now at least, and that's working with Paula and other colleagues in DECK and across the district to be able to, to think about what makes, what makes the most sense as we move forward.
All right, so we'll see just, yeah.
I was just going to say, when you bring your proposals to us, what I would really welcome is including a summary of what we just discussed, because I think we just raised lots of really good points. Some will perhaps support what you're proposing, some might not, but at least to lay those all out and know that they've been at least considered. I just, I don't want to miss anything essentially, where we go to make a decision.
If I may, a friendly amendment, or we'll list what was raised, and they're either considered or they're for consideration, depending on the, Jennifer's point's a really good one on the bank time. But we'd have to figure out how to do that, we'd have to learn from some of our colleagues, et cetera. We may not get that by a week from Monday.
Great. Okay, now we're on to the review of the two thousand and fifteen sixteen board meeting calendar.
So let me present as a draft for you the continuing conversation that we've had, which is to be able to schedule our meetings in a way that's timely for the types of deliberations that we're having, like we're having tonight, and provides enough time for colleagues in, on my team across the district, but my team especially, to be able to do the requisite work, to be able to provide the analysis. The, the schedule, as, as suggested, moves our calendar from thirty-four meetings annually to twenty-four. And it combines, in most cases, the working meeting like tonight with the finance committee meeting, and then having a board meeting at other times. There's a balancing act here, so some of this is also going to be, has to be married to what's the agenda that we're working on. We've got seven or eight standing things right now that fill a lot of our plates that we have to work on as administration with the board. And we can actually start to put that into these sessions. And then there's a discipline of, of finding the right, the right amount of time to actually engage in the subjects if we're making a, a decision, a controversial decision, to ensure that we're before you twice so that the community can hear things out. So Sunny and I have been working on this as part of a policy committee, and our suggestion is to move forward on a calendar like this and to be diligent on, on evaluating if it's working, if we're squeezing too much, if we're doing well by it, and also if, if we find that we're not, we're packing too much into the meetings, we can, there's room to maneuver to schedule more meetings.
Tom?
Just one question on the mighty working finance. Since some things that come before the working board meetings do not come before finance, we would have expanded agenda, I take it.
Yeah.
And that would mean a longer.
The, the trade-off on that would be, it would be a potentially longer, or let's take potential out of my sentence, a longer meeting. But then we would free up a Monday during the month for all of us, and then we would free up a week's time, the week's time to be able to do the type of analytic questions that you will ask.
And then you would envision getting the information to us sooner, so we could maybe ask some questions before the meeting?
Would it actually be sooner? I mean, we get it right now on Friday after, Friday at noon or whatever it is, but.
The old deadlines, we always said Thursday, but it never came until Friday. So we try to back it up, is that possible?
Let me scope it out on the big issues.
The achievement is, accountability achievement, we had something for two weeks before, a week before, so some of the longer reports, because we tried to build in some review time.
I mean, quite frankly, we, we come from a meeting like this and, and then go back to the office on Tuesday and along with everything else we have to do in the district, we have to start to prepare for a Thursday deadline right now so that I can read it Thursday and offer comments. You know, in the ideal world, I'd get it on Wednesday. So some of these are about processes. So I think honestly, Claudia, right now, I'm not sure we would get it early.
Okay.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Well, I think too, we had another thought as we were discussing this. And I don't really know what the genesis of separating like a working from a regular board meeting, why that distinction came about. But the idea was by combining working and finance, that we would just be very careful about the agendas for both. So we're not having like a huge working board meeting agenda and a huge finance meeting agenda, that maybe some of the working agenda would be pushed to the next, what's now a regular board meeting. So there wouldn't be maybe as much distinction between a working and a regular meeting.
I have a question about the format for the working finance. Do you envision it, the finance working here or in the smaller room where we have more conversation around finance?
I mean, in all honesty, in my envisioning of this is that finance really ends up being a committee of the whole. And that, because I think a lot of us come to the finance meetings regardless of actually being on the finance.
No, assuming everyone's there.
And so, I mean, I was envisioning, yes, we kind of stay, I mean, they're filmed anyway, it's like just staying here.
But in the format, you mean in the square?
I'm just wondering, I think sometimes the square, there's more conversation than there is here. And I'm wondering if we're losing something in the
I would totally agree. I really appreciate the format of the finance committee meeting.
I do too.
In the square with more conversation than in this sort of restrictive format.
It's a little bit less formal, which I think is helpful in some ways.
Especially as we have stakeholders in the meetings and are able to kind of engage with them in conversation. This isn't inclusive to that.
This pushes us to be even more planful, depending on what the issues are. So that, Tracy, as you put forward, if it's the achievement and accountability report, or it's a policy analysis on one of our programs that we know we want to have dialogue and debate on, then, then we should, we should be two weeks ahead of time. We should plan ourselves now to say if we're going to come back on the analysis of second language and tweet programs, that will work for them. It will appear on this finance committee, working committee meeting, and we'll get it for you a week and a half ahead. But that's a, that's a, that's a planning and process piece that as a team, we're going to have to work on.
I think there's probably one tweak I would make because I really like generally what has been proposed. And I know policy used to be a policy and program committee where there was a review of of programmatic type of changes, where we could go in depth and was sort of the first pass. And as I looked at this, I thought, okay, taking away several board meetings where we might, because we have finance with working, we might not put as many topics on the working board meetings. Maybe instead of having three policy committee meetings during the year, maybe we went to five. And maybe those could be the entry point for some of our programmatic discussions, so that we, it's still not as many as it was, it's closer to this proposal. It allows us to go in depth when people are fresh, so that we're not adding really meaty programmatic discussions on to the end of a, you know, two-hour finance committee meeting. I just would be curious about people's reaction to that.
I think it's a great idea, particularly to get it on the books. And if it turns out that we don't have enough, then we can easily cancel. But to know we have a little bit of cushion there, because with all of our things that are coming up, it looks maybe a little tight. And you're right about starting a conversation about programs after a finance meeting would be tough.
What do you think about that?
I mean, I think that's fine. I like the idea of bringing more programmatic discussion back to policy. I think in practice, that just hasn't been how it's been the last couple of years, which is why we decided to pare it down. But I'm, I mean, I'm perfectly okay with adding a couple of more policy meetings and having those actually be, not just, you know, discussing the little press changes, having them be more substantive discussions.
And I would recommend even just modifying the name of the committee to reflect that, that it's programming and policy or something.
It used to be that.
It was.
It was. Everything old, new again.
What I'd like to do is, and Adila and I and the team can sit down, and we can look at, when do we know that we have key decisions? Budget is one. When do we know that we have key decisions?
For programming.
Programming, enrollment, et cetera. And then think about what the balancing act for, when we know that we're going to have a substantial amount of work, how do we balance that off? So if I can, if I can take your suggestion and then fit it into a calendar and then come back.
I think, yes.
And one response, maybe just to arm wrestle a little bit, maybe it's four, maybe, again, as opposed to five. I want to see what the flow is before we absolutely see this.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? So Paula, you had a chance to sort of, after almost a year, think about the discipline and efficiencies in the meetings and your interpretation and evaluation as you go, you know, thinking of going from 34 to 24 on the meeting management side of things?
Well, the meetings are managed beautifully, let me tell you that. So that's one piece. I think, yes, I have. It's actually a very good question. And some of that, in the dance of it takes two to tango in a positive way. We as a staff need to present information in a way that's even more transparent, more understandable, and succinct, and to the point, you know, calling the question, calling the dilemmas, et cetera. So part of that is a, we haven't gotten there yet, though, in terms of really managing our board and community reporting in a way that, that is as efficient as possible, so that frankly, you all can not spend the entire weekend going through hundreds and hundreds of pages. But then we have to actually make sure that we have the hundreds of pages of analysis done, and that we all, as presenters of information, can present something in an efficient way. So that's, that's the supply side. And then the, the side here would be how we engage with the board chair, with the committee chairs, on what we're planning, what the right timing is. And we, we work pretty well on that, but these issues come up. But I think we want to be as disciplined as possible on the types of questions we're calling. This is information, this is a preliminary decision, this is a decision, this is a conundrum. I mean, we can, we can sort of figure out how to frame that and then use your time and expertise well.
Great. Any other questions? Informal, would anyone like to address the board? Informal presentation for the public?
She wants to talk to me.
Okay.
My name is Rhonda Present, and I am, gosh, I think the longest-standing parent advocate on the school calendar in District 65, if there is such a title. I currently have junior at the high school, but began my work, advocacy work around the calendar when my daughter was in second grade at King Lab. And we really have come a long, long way. The fact that we have a parent survey, asking parents what they think about all these disparate calendar issues is amazing. And I just want to thank you all for that and the administration, the leadership on it. And I know it's not easy, and we asked for it for many years, and it's been kind of brewing, and to finally see it come to fruition, I think is great. I, in addition to serving for seven years on the District 65 Calendar Committee, I also am now in my third year on the District 202 Calendar Committee, and I'm a member of the Joint Calendar Committee between District 65 and 202. I think you've, you've raised all the important issues, all the issues that we've been discussing in our joint committee, between the different committees. As for the survey itself, there's just a couple of points I want to make on the alignment of the start date question. One is because the way question three ended up getting structured, it basically forced the respondent to choose between whether they thought winter break was more important or spring break was more important, or the start date was more important. And so by the nature of how it was, that question was framed, it kind of skews the results a little bit, because people had to choose. And obviously, people would probably choose the breaks over the start date. But if asked, how would you feel if the District 65 start date was two weeks later than the high school, and you have children in both districts, I think we might have gotten a little bit of a different response. If you look at question six, which was the follow-up question, and I'm so glad there was a follow-up question, if you take the neutral folks out there, 47, almost, well, 48, 47.48% either agreed, thought it was very important or fairly important that the district, that the start date be aligned, and 20.68 said slightly. So if you just take those neutral people out, you've got more people wanting alignment on the start date. I think the point that Beatrice raises is very important about the fact that even if you all choose to kind of push things slightly earlier by a few days, that still doesn't enable the high school to achieve its goal of having semester exams before break, which would be the whole purpose of starting the school year, you know, moving the start of the school year earlier. If we can't do that, I can say as a member of the District 202 Calendar Committee, and I'm just a parent representative, I'm not an administrator or a school board member, I can say that I don't really see the point in that. I would, we should have the same start date unless there's some compelling reason to not. And the only compelling reason I can see would be if semester exams can be, you know, done before the winter break, which would allow students and families to really have a true winter break, a stress-free winter break, which I think is, is the goal there. So anything else? I, oh, the only final thing, we've been asking for years, how many families have children in both districts? And we've been told, year after year after year, and this board and the other board have been told year after year that we don't know. And I think I just heard someone say, we actually have a number, that it is 12%. And I'm just curious as to where that number came from, because I think just as of two weeks ago, we didn't seem to know how many. So I don't know if that can be shared later with the board or with me privately or whatever, but I'd love to know. Because I do think that's, that's an important question, and I'm really glad it was asked. And we've been asking that question, and it's important for decision-making. So thank you all, and look forward to continuing to build a better fam, a better calendar for our students and for the working families in our community. And it's, and my final, final point is that 10 years ago, we would never even be, board members would never be asking, what is the impact on working families when discussing the school calendar? And the fact that we're doing that today is just truly amazing to me. And I hope we keep on asking the question, because how well our families do economically is going to determine how well our children do in school. And it's, it's really important. So thank you.
Hi. I'm Paula Zalinski. I'm president of the District 65 Educators Council, and I live at 708 Wesley here in Evanston. I just wanted to remind everyone that we have many teachers who are also parents, and they're also part of the working families. I have a few things I wanted to just point out to you, first of all, about the discussion. First of all, about Election Day. So you notice the discrepancy between the parent results on not having school on Election Day versus the teachers? And I think that it, one of the reasons is, we have five schools that are currently used as polling places, and we have teachers who are very concerned about these buildings being open on Election Day and accessible to individuals coming to vote or individuals who are working, running the elections. It's been something that DEC has brought up repeatedly, nobody talked about it tonight. But from our perspective, it's a safety issue. And we have to ask ourselves, you know, why, why, if we have to have voting, which we do, and we have to have it in the schools, which we do, why are we having school on those days? When, when, I have to tell you, the teachers feel really unsafe about the situation. Hopefully, we will be addressing that. Second thing, I wanted to talk about this idea of this full calendar alignment. I'm really happy to hear the board sort of saying, you know, wait a minute, let's do what's in the best interest of District 65 students. I wanted to say something about the North Shore schools. I brought some of the Skokies. They're the ones that are starting sort of different from when their high schools are. So I don't know if they're really, I think they are, the Skokies are pretty fair comparisons to District 65. The other thing is about the humidity level, which is what we say is what's up in August. I think I turned in the humidities, but if I didn't, I will, I have them. But the humidity is a lot higher in August, and it makes the buildings much more miserable. You know, again, they are, you know, they're not air-conditioned. The classrooms are, some of them work effectively, but at Dewey School, you know, you can go on the first floor facing east in the afternoon, and those rooms are burning up. They're humid, they're hot, the air conditioners really don't, don't work effectively with those windows in that building. Again, the, as you know, the common spaces are not air-conditioned. So, you know, I think that it's all a matter of, you know, what might be appropriate for the high school, might be developmentally appropriate for high school kids, and what they can handle may not be developmentally appropriate for our students. So we're just very pleased to hear you talking about, you know, what's in the best interests of District 65 students. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Paula. I have one announcement, that the Park Advisory Committee will be meeting at 6:00 p.m. tomorrow, May 5th, at Park School.
Can I take a moment, a personal privilege, just to recognize my good friend Rod Skinner, who's been enjoying our meeting all night? Rod is a lifelong educator for 35 years-ish, as a teacher, as a high school counselor. He was a partner of mine when we worked together in the education business in San Diego over 30 years ago. And I appreciate you being here and enjoying our forum.
Welcome. If there's no further business to come in front of the board, I find this meeting interesting.
Thank you.